All right, it's seven o'clock and we welcome you all to the Planning Commission on May 22nd, 2025. We will open with the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Butler and followed by the opening remarks by Commissioner Fugel.
Would you all arise and repeat the pledge after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hail to God, Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity here to talk about Pleasant Grove City today and we're grateful for all that was done in our life. We ask that it bless us this evening and we can be level-headed and be able to discuss the important topics that are brought before us today and we ask for that guidance when we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Phillips and a second by Commissioner Martineau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the staff reports?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's staff reports.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fugel and a second by Commissioner Butler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any declarations of conflicts or abstentions from commission members? Seeing none, I'll go to first thing on tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing, preliminary subdivision plat located at approximately 1809 West State Street in the Sam Whites Lane neighborhood. The public hearing is to consider the request of William Shoup for a two-lot preliminary commercial subdivision plat called Grove Commons Plat D on 1.375 acres located at approximately 1809 West State Street in the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict.
All righty.
Hi Jacob.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm Jacob Hawkins from the Planning Department. So the first item that we have for tonight is a subdivision called Grove Acres Plat D. Now, this is the property. Can you guys see this well enough? Okay, so Grove Acres Plat D is going to be on this property right here. Right now, there's already an office building on this property, but this property is zoned, the Grove Commercial Sales, and it's got a little clip on it for the Grove Mixed Housing. But overall, the surrounding properties, as you can see, is all like in the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict and on the properties just to the south here are in the Grove Mixed Housing Subdistrict. Going to the aerial image, just to kind of give you a bit of context for what the surrounding development looks like. We've got CC Bank here, which Dustin's familiar with. We've got the Jimmy John's building right here. We've got Walmart here.
For the record, we should all be familiar with it.
We should all be. Yes, sir. And then we've got the Viewpoint Apartments down here as well. And actually, we'll kind of talk about this just a little bit because getting into some of the history of this property. So this property was originally subdivided here as Lot 1 of Grove Commons Plat A and then as the Viewpoint Apartments came in, they came in and filled in these other lots down here. If it'll work. Here we go. So the Viewpoint Apartments came in, oh wait, this one right here. And they filled out this lot here coming in. There it is. Right here, Lot Number 2. And so whenever the Viewpoint Apartments came into play, whenever they were approved, they were approved with a certain number of parking spaces, but some of those parking spaces were located on this subject property for tonight. And you can kind of see that here on this previous one that was approved where Lot 1 was. So you can see right here, there's this whole parking easement right here. Now, this parking easement included about 53 parking spaces that were going to be used for the Viewpoint Apartments. And so the applicant in subdividing the property tonight, this is what it looks like. What they want to do is they want to take this one lot right now and split it into two separate lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2, which these are going to be renamed Lot 12 and Lot 13, but just for the sake of tonight, they're Lot 1 and Lot 2. So the Viewpoint Apartments, that easement currently comes up and takes up all of the parking on Lot 1 and also over here on the southern half of this property right here. What the applicant is proposing to do is they're going to extend that easement all the way through the whole development instead. And that way, it gives them a little bit more flexibility for whenever they want to develop this property, which I believe the intent of this property is to be developed with another office building. But as we get the site plan for that office building and go through all of the Grove requirements and the parking and stuff, we'll figure out the parking and the open space and all of that at that time. So, but for the sake of, you know, just doing the subdivision itself for tonight, it meets all of the zoning requirements for subdivisions in the Grove Zone. Lot 1 is about point, sorry, Lot 2 is about .75 acres and provides access directly from State Street. And then Lot 2 also provides an access easement all the way down to Lot 1, which is about .625 acres. Like I said, the shared parking goes through the whole development and we'll look at that a little bit closer when it gets time for the site plan. But other than that, since it meets all the requirements for the Grove Zone, staff recommends approval of the proposed subdivision plat and I can take any questions.
How many parking lots were in that original agreement?
53 parking spaces in the original agreement, which includes all of this.
Okay. Do you know how many parking spots are just on the right side of that?
On the right side, I did-
That's the left. How about the right side?
Oh, over on the right side.
Include that proportion right there. Does that still remain the 53 if you do the two on the right? Are close to that?
Close to it. So, I mean, what's really going to happen is that 53 parking spaces is divided pretty much evenly between these two properties or the two existing properties, so 1 and 2. And so this property is just taking their half and distributing it through the rest of their property. So the remaining, what, 23 spaces or something like that will still be over here on this southern half. And so if this property ever is subdivided or developed, then we'll kind of figure out what those parking requirements are going to be for that property at that time.
So to clarify, the parking spots that are being vacated or from here are going here?
Correct. They're extending up through that area.
And I know we're not talking UCIAD or anything else, but that's a 27,000 square foot building?
No, this is the lot.
Or lot size. What's the square foot of the building?
There is no building on this property just yet.
Okay.
That will come with the site plan if and whenever we get it, but we don't even have the application.
I'm just trying to outguess ahead as to about how many parking stalls they would need depending on the type of use. And I know that's not what we're hearing, but I know that will come into play sooner or later.
Right.
Okay, as long as that's understood upfront, I don't want that to come back later and be a, I didn't understand this, can we change code again?
Right. And we're actually working with the applicant on trying to figure out some sort of answers for this parking agreement.
Okay.
And where it can be located.
Any other questions for Jacob? Thank you so much, Jacob.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? If you could just state your name for the record, very lovely.
Mark Greenwood. I'm with ALM Engineering. We represent the applicant in this case. Jacob and the city have done a wonderful job in helping us. We've done many things here in the city over the last close to 40 years and I've always loved working in Pleasant Grove. Just to kind of clarify, the Grove Commons Commercial area, this whole, those whole four lots right there was approved back in 2014 and the original plan has four buildings on it, two on this side and two on the east side. All of the improvements, all the parking, everything are put in for those buildings. They're practically, if I remember right, about 6,000 square feet in each of those buildings. I think that might help you with the numbers. The 53 stalls are all of those ones on the south half of the four pieces and the current owners are in that Lot Number 2 building. And they've got somebody that's wanting to buy that building and they're just trying to keep the other one and they've got somebody interested in it too, but it makes more sense for them to split it if possible and go forward. So any questions you have, I'm happy to discuss it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. And seeing none, I will close it to the public and I will bring it up to the commissioners for discussion or a motion. All right, I'll move the Planning Commission to approve the request of William Shoup for a two-lot preliminary subdivision plat called Grove Commons Subdivision Plat D located approximately 1809 West State Street in the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report and as modified by the conditions below, all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met. I have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Butler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward, we're going to be hearing items 2, 3, 4, and 5 all together tonight. Item number 2, it's a public hearing to consider the request of St. John's Properties for four-lot preliminary commercial subdivision plat called Valley Grove Business Park Plat R on 5.185 acres located at approximately 1135 South Valley Grove Way in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict. Item number 3 is a public hearing to consider the request of St. John's Properties for a commercial site plan for a retail building, Building P, located at approximately 1165 South Valley Grove Way in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict. Item number 4, public hearing to consider the request of St. John's Properties for a commercial site plan for a retail building, Building Q, located at approximately 1077 South Mountain View Lane in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict. Item number 5, public hearing to consider the request of St. John's Properties for a commercial site plan for a retail building, Building R, located at approximately 1033 South Mountain View Lane in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict. Jacob?
It's quite a few items. I don't envy the person who has to go through all the items for approval at the end. All right, so this next item is for St. John's Properties for a subdivision plat and three retail buildings. I'll start with the wrong thing. Let's go here. Close out of that, close out of that, go here. So we're going to be right down here in the Valley Grove area. There it is. All right, so this is North County Boulevard. We've got Pleasant Grove Boulevard over here. And we've got the Towers from St. John's over here. This is the True Home 2 Suites that was approved pretty recently. And we've got a few of these other retail buildings that have all been established all over here, just so you guys are kind of familiar with the area. And then we've got Retail J and K up here. This is where like Panera is and all that. Looking at the zoning map, so this property specifically, it is right here. It is right in between the Valley Grove Mixed Use overlay areas, but it itself is only in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict. And so because it's only in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict, it's only required to meet the requirements for the Grove Zone rather than for the Valley Grove Mixed Use Zone. So looking at the plat. One again, here we go. So there are four lots and only these bottom three are actually going to be developed. This is where all the site plans are going to go. Lot 38 itself is intended to be developed eventually, but we don't have an actual site plan application for it just yet. But there may be a restaurant on that property potentially, so. But right now, these three properties are just going to be for a couple of different retail buildings, just like they do with a lot of their other developments. And these buildings, these lots are going to be 1.462 acres right here, 1.09 acres right here, and then 1.446 acres right here. And this is going to be for Buildings P, Q, and R. So in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict, there are no minimum requirements for the lot area with their frontage and instead, certain setbacks and landscape buffers are required to be met to beautify the overall site. And between building location, the setbacks and landscape buffers, and the required parking, each lot becomes large enough to be buildable in its own right, essentially. So looking at the site plan, here we go. Access to this property comes from a few different points. We've got one point here from Mountain View Lane. We've got one point here from Valley Grove Way and then we have two separate spots coming from the property over here just to the east, which is where one of those Valley Grove Towers is. And in the Grove Interchange Subdistrict, many retail and restaurant uses are permitted by right. Retail uses require a parking ratio of one space for every 200 square feet of gross floor area and restaurant uses generally require a parking ratio of one space for every 3.5 chairs within the establishment. Now, without knowing the exact layout of each individual use within each of these buildings, staff generally requires each building to meet a parking ratio of one space for every 200 square feet of gross floor area. And so the applicant has provided the square footage of each of these buildings, particularly over here. I'm just kidding. You can't see the site plan anymore. That's it, we're done. We're done with the meeting. But in each of these buildings, the applicant did provide the square footage for the floor space of each of those uses or for each of the buildings, the interior. And so Retail P, this one, has an interior floor space of 18,700 square feet, which requires 94 parking spaces. Retail Q and Retail R both have about 9,500 square feet, so both of them will require 48 parking spaces. So as stated above, the applicant provided for 179 spaces within the boundaries of their property, but then they also have a few extra spaces right out here. They've got nine spaces out here for additional parking through a shared parking agreement. And they'll also be sharing some of the parking up here from this lot to this one over here. So they're going to include a shared parking agreement between these two lots as well, so that way they can make sure every building has its own specific parking requirements. And so in total, 188 parking spaces are required and that is what's being provided. And on top of that, all parking spaces will need to be accounted for with each business license, which I'll keep track of, whether it is a restaurant or a retail use or however it is. A 25-foot landscaping buffer is required to be provided behind the back of curb adjacent to a street. However, the city council may approve a five-foot reduction to this landscape buffer as long as the developer has provided enhancements and exceeded the city's standard requirements for architecture, amenities, and landscaping for the overall project area. And in this case, the developer has provided additional open space beyond the minimum requirement and such, let's see here. And so that will contribute to the applicant's appeal to have a 20-foot buffer from this side over here. And that's what they're meeting is just 20 feet along that whole row where they're between the drive-through and the back of curb, which is where the property line is. The overall development is required to provide a minimum of 10% open space throughout the development and the applicant has actually provided 23%, 23.8% open space at approximately 41,480 square feet of the overall area. The parking lot also includes landscape diamonds and planters at the end of parking rows, meeting the minimum landscaping requirements for the Grove Interchange Subdistrict. Moving on to the elevation plans, here's what the buildings are going to look like. Now, something to note, permitted building materials include brick, stone, earth-toned colored decorative block, fiber cement siding, wood, concrete, or other durable building material as approved by the design review board and the planning commission. However, stucco, ephes, metal, or untreated concrete block may be allowed by the planning commission as an accent or secondary material only at 49% or less of the building. And so Retail P, which is this one right here, has about 47.1%, sorry, 46.6% of this building is that accent or secondary material. And then for Retail Q, this one is 48.4% of the building is the accent or secondary material. And Retail R is 47.1%. And so it meets the codes there and all buildings are approximately 28 feet tall and the Grove Zone allows for buildings to go up to 65 feet, so they're good there. The proposed site plans were brought before the Design Review Board on May 19th, 2025. The Design Review Board recommended approval of the site plan, although one of the things that was discussed during the Design Review Board were the driveways and the proposed uses within the buildings. Now, if you notice here on the site plan or landscaping plan in this case, there are drive-throughs that go through a couple of these buildings and uses in these buildings will likely be retailer, restaurant, and fast food restaurants specifically as defined in our zoning ordinances are only permitted for one for every 10 acres in this particular area. So let me actually go to that section, just that way you guys are aware of what that requirement is. Chapter 14. Just kidding.
We thought you'd have that memorized by now, Jacob.
I know. It's a lot of different stuff. Looking for pictures. All right, hold on. Where's the thing? There it is. Found it. Okay, fast food restaurants right here. Fast food restaurant is defined as any establishment whose principal business is the sale of foods, frozen desserts, or beverages to the customer in a ready-to-consume state for consumption, either on the premises or off the premises, and whose designer-principle method of operation is such that customers are normally served their foods, frozen desserts or beverages, and paper, plastic, or other disposable containers. More than 50% of their food-serving operations is via drive-up facilities. So that's what we categorize a fast food place to be. And so according to this, it does say, does not exceed one per every 10 acres within the total project's areas, which is this section right here. And this property is in this area, nope, this one right here, number 3. So, yes.
So you're saying that they can have two fast foods and then the other one has to be a restaurant?
Effective.
A sit-down restaurant?
Effectively, yeah. Or something that doesn't have that 50% of the drive-through being their main use or that they don't have like, you know, utensils and paperware that they can chip off.
How many total acres is that, number 3?
Let's check that out. About 25 acres, so they could have about four fast food restaurants within that area. Four, is that right? One for every 10 acres? So just two. Just kidding. One for every 10 acres. Yeah, so two or three.
Any other questions for Jacob?
I would assume that the drive-through starts here and goes around?
Yes.
Pickup window, pickup window, or it goes in and that's the exit here?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Marty Beaumont with St. John's Properties. Good to be with you again. Yeah, we're excited to get some more buildings built down here. Most of our retail stuff is filled up. We've got two buildings that'll open up on Pleasant Grove Boulevard. You've probably seen those going up. We're hoping to have those open by mid-July. So in a couple more months here, they should be paving tomorrow and Tuesday and so things are moving fast. This here is right next to my office, which is directly adjacent in that first building up against North County Boulevard and so we're excited to see some dirt fly there, some buildings built, things coming out of the ground and fill those up and have some exciting plans for that area. So this other building, actually, Building P is actually a little bit different floor plate that you can see than some of our typical just retail pads and shell buildings that we have. So the front two are very similar to like across the road or over where Cafe Rio is or Village Baker. Some of those buildings are very similar, but this other one's a little bit different floor plate that allows for a little different use, maybe a little bit bigger restaurant user or clothing store or something that might want a little more square footage than is allowed by a smaller 70-foot floor plate and this is more like 85 to 90, can be separated a little bit differently. So we're excited about having a little bit of a different product there for some of those other types of users that we see would be interested in this area, especially as it's continuing to grow. So yeah, excited that it's got a lot of landscaping there in the middle. We're excited to see that and have a place to rest there. We've got some grass in there and we'll see what happens with it. We've kind of liked those in between our office buildings. You've seen that we've got a little bit of open space there where people can go out and relax and rest. So we're excited about having a little bit more space there, but it's just the way it laid out. It laid out perfectly to be able to have that. We couldn't really do anything else with the middle part, but yeah, we're excited to see this project go up and get moving and hope to start here in July and hopefully have buildings built by early next spring, all these three buildings, so.
I do have a question on, you know, these corners right here.
Yeah.
For your average car, it looks like it won't be a problem, but if one of these develops into something other than fast food, would you have any kind of a delivery truck through there and were those corners, would those create an issue?
No, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't really have a reference as to how tight that corner is.
If you're saying a box delivery truck, that might be a little bit more. Smaller one's probably fine. I know that we expanded out the radius towards the back. I think some of the initial ones that we built were a little bit tight on the back end and so not the inside corner, but the outside corners were expanded a little bit more so they can swing out a little bit wider and get around there a little bit easier. Separations for buildings have been changed and radius points have been changed in the last few years, so.
Just, I've watched a lot of trucks bounce over curbs and I just, that's something to think about.
Yeah. We feel pretty comfortable with, and the separations from the buildings and things like that have gotten to be a little bit more as well, so on those back ends, so that kind of helps be able to get- on those back ends, so that kinda helps be able to get trucks around and, and back to the drive-up windows and things like that, so. But yeah, we're excited about this project moving forward. Any questions?
So I noticed that the entry point is gonna be adjusted to the northeast from where it currently is.
Yeah.
Cause that would be, the current entry is about right here.
Correct.
Right? And so also on the current building, like, the corner is right here. It looked like there was going to be an adjustment to some of the parking here. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, there's a minor site plan amendment that we submitted for the revisions to this parking lot on that office space. This actually ties right into the backside of that office building. So people will be able to come through there and get out, and then this building will come up and tee into that or go straight out to North County Boulevard here. So yeah, I, there's great accessibility on all of this and, and flow through there, so. Um, and that lines up really well with.
With the other side, yeah.
Going out the other side as well, rather than right here, it kinda had an offset jump, uh, to this driveway. We expect quite a bit of traffic here with all of that use, so we wanted to try to line that up a little bit better. However, this, this site hasn't, we don't know exactly what's going over here yet, but right now it will line up and, and intend to try to do that, but.
And, and per my wife's request, um, Trader Joe's would fit really good right there. She will ask me, so, just.
I know, seriously.
It's my wife. I mean, yeah.
Um, yeah, it's interesting, uh, probably public information since they've come to DRC, but, uh, Longhorn Steakhouse is, um, working with us on that, that piece there, so hopefully that, uh, they seem pretty motivated. We're also trying to work to, to get that deal done and, and no guarantees, but that, that is why we're creating this other lot up here as well at this time. And hope that you'll see a site plan on that and we'll get our first real sit-down restaurant.
We could use a good sit-down in Pleasant Grove.
In Pleasant Grove, so.
I mean, it's not fat cats, but.
Yeah, we haven't got that yet, so, still working on that. But yeah, lots of, lots of movement going on in this area, lots of, um, positive things happening, and we're excited about, um, getting some things finished up and starting some new ones, so.
Is, is there any purposeful design that's gone on to tie it into the retail area across the street in the overlay area?
Um.
Cause, and, and I'll say, kinda the motivation behind that question is we, this is where the hotel was gonna be, and then we moved the hotel across the street, pulled this over. The idea of putting the hotel there originally when the whole pitch was done for the exchange of residential areas was it drives, makes us, it drives that whole area to be walkable, have people go back and forth between that area, that type of stuff, so. I mean, this meets the requirements, but is there any design to tie that all in still?
Um, as far as an exact, like an extension, so promenade way, if you looked at the development agreement and what was proposed down from the, from the roundabout, past the hotel, down into the main promenade and plaza. That, that's pretty intense, high, a, a little bit more expensive design and elements. The streetlights are very expensive, streetlights, cause we're putting him in right now. Um, and so it's a little bit enhanced and intentionally so, that's going to be kind of the main drive, uh, hopefully of this commercial. You know, there's two hundred thousand square foot of retail planned across the street. Uh, this area here, we've enhanced those buildings up from what some of these over here are. We feel like that they're a little bit higher quality design. Uh, some of the landscaping has increased as well on this side to try to encourage and, and enhance this Mountain View corridor or Mountain View Lane as it comes down through the roundabout. But I don't know that there's a specific design element that's carried up to North County Boulevard on that. Uh, obviously six-foot wide sidewalks and providing the access and similar things down through there. But Todd, there's not, I, I don't know that I can point to a specific, hey, this is what we're doing over here and it's gonna tie right through. Now, this is gonna be, it's gonna be nice and, uh, you know, the trees, grass, all of the things, plantings are gonna be, be nice through there, but there isn't really an element that, that extends that all the way up to here. It'll be very similar to what's across the road.
What, what are the enhanced design elements? Cause I, I'm, when I was reading through the staff report, it felt like you were building just more buildings that are like where Cafe Rio is and stuff.
Yeah, as far as the landscape enhancements or the.
Landscape or building design? Yeah, what are we doing there?
We have a kind of a standard template for this type of retail in this area, so we want them to somewhat match what we've been built. We don't wanna come and try to just do something totally, um, that may not fit and, and look very well. Um, and so some of the different building materials are different on these buildings than on the other buildings. Maybe the brick style is a little bit different than, than what you might see over Cafe Rio or, or over Village Breaker. So not unique in the style of the build, but some of the materials, we're trying to switch that up and change that up a little bit more. We kept with like all of the glazing and the glass, very, it's very expensive to do that, but we wanted to have the open fill of those buildings to be able to look in and out and, and feel like the light's coming in, things of that nature. So we kept with that on, kind of on the main floor, but we tried to do some enhancements on the actual type of, um, you know, the different materials that are being used on the exterior, um, facades of the building, so. Um, again, it's, it's, it's a typical, you know, it's not gonna be a huge difference. Like if you go to N and O, across the road, Retail N and O, right there by Pleasant Grove Boulevard, that's in.
Sorry, Lot N and O. I was trying to think of a business named N and O. And I was like, what is N and O?
Retail N and O is what we call them. That's what they, these are Retail P, Q, and R. We're really unique. We're right in the alphabet, but, um, they don't make any sense location-wise how that works, but, uh, but Retail N and O, which are over here on the Pleasant Grove Boulevard, um, those are significantly enhanced. They have some.
Those are the ones currently being, currently being built, right?
Yeah, those are the ones. You'll see a big difference in that design, look, and feel. Um, this doesn't, uh, these are gonna be looking a little bit similar, but different types of materials, so they don't just look like a, you know, cookie cutter type same building. Um, they'll have some enhancements that way, but.
Yeah, cool.
Very successful, uh, as you can see, um, you know, we're probably eighty-five to ninety percent full on all of our retail down there.
It's fantastic.
And things are continuing to look positive and move forward. It's a great location, obviously, right there off the Boulevard and North County Boulevard. So some great things happening there and we just look forward to keep her moving, so.
Any other questions for Marty? Thank you, Marty.
That's why we don't have nice things.
This. This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open it to the public. And not seeing any public, I'll close it to the public and I'll bring it back up to the commissioners for discussion or a motion.
Ju- just from a discussion standpoint, I did have Daniel, or sorry, not Daniel, Jacob throw in the, uh, the agreement, the development agreement with, with Saint John's and then also the kinda design, just to make sure we're looking at this as a holistic approach to that entire area. It is outside of the mixed-use area, but just wanna make sure we aren't shooting ourselves in the foot to maximize areas and make it so it's not an attractive place to be, but.
Do we keep it cohesive?
Yeah, but I do think that this is, this is gonna be pretty nice.
Yeah. So add that on the last amendment that we, that Saint, in order of the way Saint John's is operating, then we wanna keep a cohesive look with all, throughout the properties, why they maintain their own individuality.
Well, yeah, and I mean, there, there's gonna be a difference though across the street. Cause there has to be, according to that development agreement. This one, they can be, make it look more like everything that's already there, but.
Let's have you discuss that too a little bit.
Apparently.
I don't know how to put that in there and have it.
I, I mean, I don't know that we need to. Yeah, I, we don't need to. I just, I think it's important when they come and they look here, especially when they've changed from that original design that we had when we were doing the agreement. Just make sure we're still following kinda what the spirit was of that entire thing. I think this does. But I just think it's important for us as a commission to take a look at that each time they come through and what has changed from that initial agreement.
Agreed.
Well, if we're all good, I'll make a motion. For item number two, I move the Planning Commission approved the request of Saint John Properties for a four-lot preliminary subdivision called Valley Grove Business Park Platt R, located approximately at one-one-three-five South Valley Grove Way in the Grove Interchange Sub District and adopting the exhibits and conditions and findings of the staff report. And as modified by the conditions, that final planning, engineering, and fire departments requirements are met. For item number three, I move the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation for approval for the request of Saint John Properties for a commercial plan for a commercial building located approximately one-one-six-five South Valley Grove Way on the properties on the Grove Interchange Sub District and adopting the exhibits and conditions and findings of the staff report. And as modified, that all plan, final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met. And for item number four, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of Saint John Properties for a commercial site plan for a commercial building located approximately one-zero-seven-seven South Mountain View Lane on property, uh, properties on the Grove Interchange Sub District and adopting the exhibits and conditions and findings of the staff report. And as modified, that all final planning, engineering, fire department requirements are met.
Wait a second.
Oh, item number five. I move the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of Saint John Properties for a commercial site plan for a commercial building located approximately one-zero-three-three South Mountain View Lane on property zone, the Grove Interchange Sub District and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report. And as modified by the conditions below, that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
Now wait a second.
A second is for all of them individually. I'm sure we've gotta record that separately.
Okay, so I have a motion for items two, three, four, and five for approval from Commissioner Martino. And a second by Commissioner Nelson for items two, three, four, and five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. I think that's the most we've done at one time since I've been the.
Since the last time Saint John's property.
Yes, since the last time Marty was here. Uh, so we'll go on, we'll move on to, uh, item number six, which is a public hearing to consider the request of Ben Huntsman for Code Text Amendment to amend Section ten dash six dash two definitions and ten dash nine A dash eight yard requirements in the rural residential zone. The applicant is requesting to amend the setback requirements for accessory buildings in the rural residential zone and add, amend, or clarify several terms in the land use definitions.
Alrighty. So, if you guys, you made me remember, this item was continued, uh, from the last Planning Commission meeting. And one of the things that was cause for continuation from the last time, um, was the city's vision for the rural residential zone versus, uh, the rural residential zone being preserved as much as it can, as much as it can be essentially. Um, and you kinda have to forgive me as I, you know, work my way through a lot of these thoughts, uh, my notes. I've tried to work and tweak them a lot, so we'll see how it goes, but, um, I did wanna start off here uh, with the purpose of the rural residential zone. Uh, so it's established to provide areas on the fringes of corporate area of the city where residential uses may be harmoniously integrated with incidental agricultural pursuits. Uh, the zone is intended to allow the keeping of farm animals and fowl in conjunction with single-family dwelling units to an, uh, to an extent consistent with said development and in proportion to the amount of land area provided for this purpose. It is intended at the same time to retain land in parcels large enough to provide efficient and attractive development as urban uses extend in an orderly manner into these areas. The rural residential zone is also intended to accommodate residential developments which are oriented toward an equestrian lifestyle. And this would allow the design of a residential community which could contain non-commercial, non-commercial stables, training areas, and equestrian trails as an integral part of the development. So the typical piece of land in a rural residential zone, um, kinda going off of this definition, uh, you would think would be, you know, a bit larger, have a bit more open space, have the availability for people to have a few animals, uh, such as horses, or cows, or chickens, or such. Uh, however, as Pleasant Grove continues to increase in population and as housing becomes more scarce and developers and landowners, uh, wanting to subdivide further and further so their kids can live there or so they can make a profit, uh, the scarcity of properties in the rural residential zone continues to increase as well. Uh, so it's getting harder and harder for a lot of these properties in the rural residential zone to really meet a lot of these zoning requirements. Uh, in fact, you know, if we kinda come up here and just kinda click on a few of these smaller properties, uh, for example, um, let's just say, oh, that one's point five acres. There's quite a few out here that are a bit smaller than a half acre. Uh, here's one that's point four acres. Um, here's some up here, point four-six acres. Um, so there's a lot of these different properties in the rural residential zone that just aren't, you know, they don't really follow the ideal of the rural residential zone. Um, and, you know, just as development continues to, uh, expand here in the rural residential zone and as redevelopment occurs, um, the city's kinda faced with the decision to either hold fast to the vision of maintaining the rural residential character in these areas versus letting things slide more and more into the single-family character. Um, so looking at the current zoning ordinances, um, it appears that there have been many changes to the rural residential zone over the past years. They kinda chip away at the original version, uh, the original vision of the rural residential zone, which was to maintain properties in a way for people and animals to live on, to live on larger, more rural lots. So for example, in twenty-ten, um, there was a Code Text Amendment to the lot width requirement that changed the lot width requirement to be a hundred ten feet. Um, in twenty-fifteen, actually, you know, kinda serendipitously to tonight, there was a Code Text Amendment to change the yard requirements for accessory buildings. So that way accessory buildings could be three feet from the rear or side property line. Um, and then also similarly, um, accessory buildings, um, that are more than five hundred, or, yeah, that are larger than five hundred square feet have to match the primary dwelling with similar materials, colors, details, and such. Um, and, you know, even a little bit later, uh, we had someone come in and they changed the lot coverage requirements from thirty percent to forty percent. Um, and so each of these Code Text Amendments just sort of feels like it chips a little bit further and further away from that ideal rural residential feel that it used to be. On top of that, um, like I mentioned before, there are some, uh, developments out there, uh, while being in the rural residential zone have the make and feel of a single-family residential zone instead. And so last time, there was some discussion about why not preserve what little we have left of the rural residential zone requirements. And instead of doing a Code Text Amendment, just have some of these properties re-zoned to the single-family residential zone if they wanna have the benefits of the R-one zone and have their accessory buildings closer to their house. And yes, that would be one option for sure. Um, and in this specific case with this applicant, that was, uh, also discussed. In fact, he said, um, that he would be willing to do a re-zone. Um, however, uh, we would see application after application of re-zones, which are legislative items. And sometimes the cost and timing of having to go through public hearings is a deterrent for someone who wants to build something on their property. And by doing a Code Text Amendment, we could help a lot of those people out, uh, you know, just before they even have to go through a lot of those applications. And it would save, save staff a lot of time. But that's a really minor argument for, um, doing the Code Text Amendment. But looking at a couple other things that I think are a bit more of a stronger argument in doing the Code Text Amendment rather than, uh, accessory buildings is what if you get someone whose house is set back further on their property, uh, closer to their rear property line? Uh, I don't know, this is kind of a little bit of a specific example, and it doesn't happen too often, but, um, but this could be one example. So for here, you see how they would have access to, you know, the street up here, but their house is so far back. If we were to not do a Code Text Amendment, they wouldn't have the room to do an accessory building at all. And of course, this isn't the only one I found. I found a few other ones, um, especially over here along, um, Canyon Drive. There's a lot of these ones. Let's see here, where were we? Let's see, where were we? Right over here, right along this bend. Where, yeah, they have, you know, some room to do some accessory buildings in the back, but it really limits the amount of space that they have in order to do an accessory building. Or in other cases, what if someone's lot is just big enough to have a horse or two, but they have to give up the benefits of the rural residential zone or their availability for a backyard because they're limited to only putting accessory buildings in the back of their property. As we were looking at before, a lot of these properties here in the rural residential zone, you know, they're a half acre and some of them can, you know, put an accessory building in their backyard, but they're giving up by putting an accessory building in their backyard, they're giving up a lot of the enjoyment that they would have for a backyard in favor of just having an accessory building. And so they've got to make that choice on which do they want more, one or the other, essentially. Versus if they were able to put it more on like the rear, if they were put, if, yeah, if they're able to put it in the side yard, then they could have a little bit more of both and it would grant a little bit more flexibility in that way. And so the proposed code text amendment for tonight, while, while for the, for an applicant who could easily just get a rezone and be done, maintains the vision of the rural residential zone by allowing for more flexibility in how people can use their land. There are already incredible restrictions on the placement of accessory buildings for the housing of animals. And so allowing for more flexibility could meet the vision of the rural residential zone by allowing for people to provide efficient and attractive development without further restricting the availability of agricultural uses. And so while the proposed code text amendment is intended to preserve the character of the rural residential zone by allowing accessory buildings to be on the interior side of a house, there may be some ways to amend the code to make sure that things don't become too much like the R-one zone. So last time when we were talking about it, I'm going to go ahead and close out of this and open up the text. So for example, instead of saying six feet from the dwelling, we can change that to maybe ten feet from the dwelling or something like that. And that way we can still allow for a little bit more flexibility than what's already there, but it's still requiring a bit more of an open space that would be more akin to the rural residential zone, just as an example. And then to this point, in fact, there are some homes in the rural residential zone that have a lot size of just a half acre, sometimes less because of old subdivisions or lot size averaging, that there wouldn't be a possibility of them being able to build an accessory building and still meet the twenty-foot separation from their home. Another option would be to increase the setbacks for accessory buildings from property lines, just kind of as we talked at the very end of the meeting last time. Of course, if we were to do that, it would create a lot of non-conforming issues, so maybe that's not as good of an idea, but it is something that we could consider. Now, one of the things I do want to avoid though is to have people just to do additions so that way they can skirt around the rules of the rural residential zone. Because the requirements for accessory buildings are more restrictive than the home itself. Especially if all other requirements are already met and they're just doing like, say, a tough shed or something like that. Because even a tough shed, something that's less than two hundred square feet, would still have to meet these requirements. And ultimately, I think that allowing an accessory building or two would be better than doing a bunch of additions and a bunch of rezones. Although if we were to do rezones, we would probably see just how little area we have left in the rural residential zone, so I guess there's something like that to consider, but. With that being said, I think that's mostly it for the argument for why we should do a code text amendment instead of a rezone. And if we do, if, you know, this is approved, I did make one change right here, at the very least. Because coming back to that one issue of, you know, if there is a house on a larger lot, but it's like further back, you know, in the, in the property, instead of having to require the accessory building to be behind the house, so even further, this could be an option there. Or if like the lot is especially wide or something like that, you know, just things to consider. But with that being said, I'm happy to take any questions. We can discuss.
Can you explain the reasoning a little bit more of why an accessory dwelling is more advantageous than an addition to the home?
An accessory dwelling is more than just an addition to the home?
Why it's, why, why is it preferred to have that, to have an accessory dwelling versus an addition to the home?
Let me make sure I'm understanding it.
I'm, like, I think that's literally what you said.
Oh, yeah, so what I was saying, it wasn't about accessory dwellings, it was just about additions versus accessory buildings.
Sorry, okay.
Yeah, so I apologize, that's what I was getting caught up on.
Why is there a preference to have?
An accessory building.
An accessory building versus an addition.
So, an accessory building does have certain height requirements that it has to meet. Whereas an addition onto the house could potentially go up to thirty-five feet because that's what the height requirement of the house is. And not only can it be thirty-five feet tall, it can be ten feet from the property line and there you go. That's the minimum requirement that we have for the home itself. An accessory building would not be able to do that. In fact, looking at this, the taller it goes, the further it has to get from the property lines. And so it is more restrictive to do an accessory building on the side property line, on the interior side property line than it is just to do an addition. And so I think one of the concerns that we were talking about last time was, you know, just creating a wall of just building and stuff. I think additions would contribute more to that than accessory buildings would.
Because you have a minimum space between buildings with fire code and other things, so.
Right.
I mean, I, and I can understand that and can wrap around that. I feel like a lot of separate buildings really close to each other does more damage than one larger building on a lot, but from, from the feel of what we want in that area. Thank you for taking a look at it. I mean, obviously, ultimately you decided there wasn't anything worth changing and it, thanks for putting the thought process through it, thought process into it. Was there anything else on the code that you felt needed to be addressed now too? I mean, we talked about maybe rearranging it so it's all close to each other, where burying things where they shouldn't be, that kind of stuff?
And besides the highlighted part, I think we've kind of discussed everything. And the change that we made last time, where it says pedestrian and vehicular access, we'll leave that in too. I think that was a really great idea. Other than that, I haven't made any changes to it, but like I said, if there are changes that we think should be included, I'd be happy to discuss that. I just haven't made any of those changes between then and now.
So then, as a thought exercise, how many more code text amendments are we going to do before it's a rezone?
For the rural residential.
Yeah, because, I mean, again, everything in the staff report and everything you presented today is just telling me from, just instinctively, it should be a rezone.
Right. And that was the main point of my argument is, for the code text amendment for tonight is, I think this one in particular, allowing for accessory buildings to be on the side of houses, maybe not quite six feet, maybe if we want to change that, we can change it to ten feet so it, you know, still has some distance. But overall, it allows more flexibility, not just for single family kind of neighborhoods, but also for just rural residential neighborhoods straight up. Because it would allow people to actually be able to have animals where otherwise they would have to choose between having animals or an accessory building or something like that, for example. And so I think this one particularly is in the spirit of the rural residential character. But I do understand the concern about, you know, just chipping away one more, one more and how, at what point do we stop to, you know, before it just becomes a single family zone? I think a lot of that has to do more with like the building itself and like the uses on the property, you know, including animal rights and, you know, accessory apartments and maybe density as well, like the lot size. I think those are things that if we were to see any more code text amendments on those, it would be to increase those requirements rather than to decrease them to make them more like single family zones. So like I said, from last time, we were kind of talking about maybe changing, so instead of doing, you know, maybe just making a side setback of ten feet, you know, I mean, it would kind of make a lot of non-conforming buildings, but if that's the direction that we want to go, so we can preserve the character of the rural residential neighborhood, that could be something that we could do. But ultimately though, they're both already so similar as it is. I'm, I can't really see any other real changes to the residential zone just from the research I've been doing, but of course, I don't know what the future really holds. Ultimately, I do know there is at least one other code text amendment that we're trying to work on, mainly in terms of the definitions of a building being attached versus detached. And that can also help with, you know, some of this stuff, making sure that there is that separation between the house and an accessory building. So some things like that might have some kind of impact on not just the rural residential zone, but all zones. But for the rural residential zone, I'm not sure. I don't really have an answer, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I mean, and just the nature of the commission with, with the turnover that it has so often, I mean, I don't think any of us were here when it changed from thirty to forty percent lot coverage, right? And then we were, I'm sure when they went through that conversation, nobody thought, oh, there's going to be another code text amendment to be even further away from our rural residential. At some point, we got to take a holistic approach to this and say, what are all the changes that have been made? Have we effectively made this into a single family residential area versus rural residential and, or do we keep chipping away at this, which just feels wrong to me too?
Right.
As much as us changing it from that, it's just the nature of where it's going. It's turning into single family housing more than.
Well, and I, I agree. I mean, you drive through there and that's what it is and the use of the land has changed so much. Do we? Yeah. I mean.
Yeah, you can have animal rights and it's a, it has to be a half acre in size, yeah. I, like, I feel rural is a little bit larger than a half acre, but. Yeah, I don't know.
Are we artificially inflating our costs and land costs by doing that, by keeping it that way?
Yeah, by calling it rural, is that?
By, by calling it rural, that's automatic inflation in my.
Yes.
My view.
It, doesn't rural have a premium in the real estate market?
No, I mean, I, yeah, I don't think as much as it used to.
Okay.
People don't want bigger lots.
Yeah, I think a lot of people nowadays, like as sacred as single family is, a lot of people really want their family to be, to live near to them. I think there's such a high demand for housing.
And for ADUs on these bigger lots, they want, that's what they're wanting nowadays.
Right.
Versus the horse.
It's hard to ride a horse in this country anyway compared to where I grew up.
Yeah.
Traffic on the roads scare me and horses.
Does anybody have any other questions for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. And seeing that, I will close it to the public and I will bring it back to the commissioners for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the request of Ben Huntsman to amend the city code section ten-nine-A-eight yard requirements in the rural residential zone and adopting the exhibits, conditions and findings of the staff report. That's it.
I'll second it. A motion by Commissioner Fugel and a second by Commissioner Patton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I have a. Sorry.
I'll second it.
I got a little ahead of myself there. I have a motion by Commissioner Phillips and a second by Commissioner Patton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
So moved.